Okay. Welcome to the Tuesday, August 1st, 2023 Regular City Council Meeting. Would you please all stand with me for Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve the August 1st, 2023 agenda. Oh, I'm sorry. I do that a lot. Roll call.
Roll call. Siebel.
Yes.
Osborne. Smock, here. Nichols.
Here.
Bergman.
Here.
Okay, now. Number four, approval of the August 1st, 2023 agenda.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number five, Ross Samick with Hawkeye Alarm is gracious enough to get us some quotes for some different options and here to answer any questions and just kind of go over this information he gave us.
Absolutely. So after our last meeting, put together three proposals, one for duress burglar security, one for video security, and one for the key fob door control system. Starting with the duress button system, the platform that we use for that is the same that we use for our intrusion systems. And so what I have listed here is kind of the required components to get a basic duress system going that can be expanded into a burglar alarm system with motion detectors or door position switches later on down the road. But with the base bid for the duress system, you get six wireless buttons that can be used anywhere in the building and would activate certain signals, you know, depending on how we programmed it, whether it's the library side or City Hall, you know, whatever side that we can program it to to best direct the officers to what side might need the attention. That is a silent alarm, there's no sirens, the police are just going to show up at that point. So for the alarm signals to be received, we have to have an account with a central monitoring company, and that is the optional, first line item under the optional items there is the $300 a year for the professional monitoring of those alarm signals. They do the calling to the 911 center dispatch, and then they do the police dispatch from there. But that monitoring company is the one that who are sitting there 24/7, 365, waiting for those alarm signals to be received, and then they process it upon receivable. So the other options there, cellular alarm communicator, so if City Hall didn't have a landline telephone, then the option to communicate those alarm signals out is a cellular pathway. That is an additional service fee for that. With that cellular communicator, we can do a few more options with text message notification, a little more flexibility as far as letting users know when the alarm goes off. The monitoring company can certainly do text messages, but as far as with the cellular communicator, then you can actually arm and disarm the system remotely and a few more interactive features. The next few items are going into, so if the system were expanded into an intrusion system for after-hours protection, where you can, so like adding a second keypad, maybe the library can have a separate arm and disarm schedule than the City Hall side of things, depending on hours. So very flexible as far as an actual intrusion alarm and separating, the whole building wouldn't have to be armed or disarmed. You can break it up into areas as the building's kind of broken up itself here. So any questions on that system platform at all? Okay. The next one was for video security, so cameras. I've quoted four indoor cameras, just covering the basic entries, watching the comings and goings, not any particular areas, just pretty much concentrating on the doorways. That would be used for retroactively, you know, watching someone come in or if there was an incident in front of one of the cameras, being able to view it. And depending on where you put it, you know, putting it back in this corner, we'd be able to cover the entryway and the entire council here. Whereas putting it right by the door, if something were to happen in this area, we may not get it covered if it's just looking at the door. So those kind of things are kind of game time decisions. Doesn't change, you know, exactly where we would put it in the room, but that's where we get your input is exactly what we're trying to accomplish with the camera. So base quote is for four indoor cameras and the required equipment for that. The optional is for four outdoor cameras for the parking lot and exterior coverage, watching sidewalks and the coming and going of the vehicles and that sort of thing. So real just kind of basic observation, nothing very specific, just situational awareness, pretty much. That system can be placed on the city network, and so you can get a phone app and then the computer app to review and video, so you don't have to go stand in the back room and look it up. It's all computer-based, so readily available. And we can get it on the police department's computers too, and they can have access to it as needed if needed, so. Last one is the door access control. So this is your key fob system to let you physically let you in the building. This one is definitely with the required hardware and labor to install locking hardware on these doors. There's definitely a significant price increase compared to the other couple of systems, but really that comes down to the hardware required and the labor needed to install it. But this quote is for two doors, and so it could be, the two south doors could be two. But the controllers come in two and four-door units. And so if you do one, you kind of do another one possibly. So quoted it with two doors and the required hardware, 50 key fobs and the option for the keypad, so you can also use like a PIN number 123545 at the door to let you in if you didn't have your key fob or something like that. This also includes mobile phone credentials, so you can actually use your phone as the key fob itself if you don't actually have a physical keychain or something like that. Not many options on that. It's pretty much the doors themselves dictate what hardware is required to make that particular door lock. The software's all web-based, and so you'd have a phone app, you can control it. It can be controlled from pretty much any computer anywhere as long as the internet's on, and then anytime inside the building too. So you can set up the schedules for, you know, the standard library unlock times. And say there's a snow day, well, you can get into the system, lock that door down for that day and not have to worry about physically coming in and locking the door or mess with the software. It's all remote accessible, so that's the major advantage for doing a web-based platform. Any questions on those items?
I had one question.
Yeah.
On the basic cameras, what's the programmable time? Is it 30 days and then it renews itself? How does that work for as far as the cameras?
Ah, that's always the billion-dollar question. Storage is the more affordable portion of the system, and so we overbuild them. I would say for four indoor cameras with the four terabyte storage, I would say 60 to 70 days pretty easily of indoor. Outdoor, it's going to drop it down quite a bit. There's not a great way to not catch every car that's passing by and headlights. And when you go outside cameras, you're recording just a lot more things going on, snow blowing, rain, those types of things. So that would cut it down. If you, if it was got below the 30 days or, you know, whatever minimum threshold we set, you can always add a storage hard drive to double that storage capacity, you know, for 200 bucks would buy you a four-terabyte hard drive, so.
But the initial basic system would be a 60-day window, probably.
I would say at least 60 days, yeah. And there's lots of settings within the programming. So say we're not quite getting that 60, we can tweak some settings, turn down the resolution just a little bit, not discernible to, you know, how we can tell, but as far as the size of the video files, it saves a little bit and try to squeeze a few more days out of it. But there's lots of options to hit those target dates. And then I did have a basic drawing of the outside camera layout, just kind of covering main entrances, main parking areas. And I think we could do a pretty good job of the outside with just four, so. And those angles are specifically to the models that we'd use, so that's exactly the field of view that that camera model would get. So it's not like we're just kind of guessing at it. That's, the software's pretty good at telling me exactly what we're going to get in the end.
And fixed.
Fixed, yeah, yeah. Yeah, the PTZ cameras are usually never looking where they need to be when something happens. And so the industry has gone away from a lot of the PTZ moving cameras to more higher-resolution cameras that are just static and watching a wide-open area and capturing everything. Yeah, so that's kind of the basic stuff.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If there's anything else, I'd happy to answer any questions, so.
Okay. Any additional questions, guys?
Not at this moment.
Okay.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Russ. We really appreciate you putting that together for us and stopping out to present and answer questions. Item number six is public discussion.
Kelly Parker, Marion Avenue. I'd like to commend the street department on the beautiful job they're doing striping the streets. I also have a concern. Iowa Code says in Section 372.13, "The council shall appoint a city clerk to maintain city records and perform other duties prescribed by state or city law." And then in Section 380.7, "The clerk shall authenticate all measures except motions with the clerk's signature and certification as to the time and manner of publication, if any. The clerk's certification is presumptive evidence of the facts stated therein." Iowa Code doesn't say the mayor pro tem shall do these roles. I thank Justin Smock for stepping in in our need, but he's not qualified. He's not bonded. He doesn't have that bond to protect the citizens of Evansdale in case our council makes some mistakes. So I really want to encourage the council to act quickly, to find a candidate, to do what it takes, post it everywhere. We really need a clerk. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Anyone else this evening? Okay, moving on. Number seven, approval of the consent agenda? I'll take a motion to approve so.
I'll make that motion to approve the consent agenda, Mayor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution number eight, Resolution 6737, is amending the personnel policy by increasing meal reimbursement by $10 per day. Currently, our meal reimbursement is $25 a day, and we know with the increase that we've experienced in every area of our life, especially if you were responsible for your breakfast, lunch, and dinner, $25 is not going to do it. We had three people, actually four people, in the last month and a half go-to training, and it was really cutting it short. They just had to pay for it themselves. That's really not our intent. And the $25, I think, was set back in the 90s, and we all know that it's increased drastically since then. And this is only on an overnight stay that your meals are reimbursed. Otherwise, you know, if you have to go to a meeting, you have to buy your own meal, it actually gets reimbursed through your payroll. That's it.
So this, this increase is only for overnight stays?
That is correct. When you're out of town, you can't go home and eat like I do every day.
So if they went for a daily meeting and they're back, then they don't get reimbursed?
They do get reimbursed if it's required of them to go. However, it's reimbursed on their payroll instead, so they have to pay taxes on it. If it's not out of town.
I'd make the motion based on what you said, Mayor, to approve Resolution 6737, amending the policy by increasing meal reimbursement for overnight stays to $35 per full day.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Siebel.
Yes.
Smock, yes. Nichols?
Yes.
Bergman?
Yes.
Okay. Number nine is approval of the resolution calendar. I'll take a motion to approve the payment of bills.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Second.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Siebel.
Yes.
Smock, yes. Nichols?
Yes.
Bergman?
Yes.
Excellent. Number 10 is request from Mike Nyman, People's Service, to replace the RAS pump at the wastewater treatment plant in the amount of $23,138 with electric pump. Mike Nyman is here, if you do have any questions for him. But what we found, or what People's Service found, is the pump is a 2003 version, and it's going to cost $15,000 to repair basically a 20-year-old pump.
I'd make a motion to approve their request from Mike Nyman for the electric pump of $23,138 for the wastewater treatment plant.
What's the other pump, the electric? Want to replace it? What runs that pump?
He said, what is the, what runs the pump?
You're replacing it with electric pump, that means you don't have electric pump.
Electric pump is the company.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Will there be a time delay in getting that product?
There's time delay for, I think it was 68 weeks on that. Might be a little long in that, but.
Oh. Yeah.
There's no two-day shipping anymore.
No, on anything, it seems.
It's not.
Yeah, 68 weeks.
What do we do, Mayor, if waiting 68 weeks, it would absolutely go down? Is there a backup plan for that process?
Yeah. Okay, sit here, do you want me to tell them?
Yeah, please.
Thanks for the question. So, wastewater treatment, thanks for the question, thank you, Mayor. There's two pumps that do similar operation for two different tanks, and in the meantime, we can use one to cover both. But that's a short-term option, and in the long run, we need both pumps to do the process going correctly.
Okay, I'm proud.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Just wait for a second.
Motion on the floor.
Go to second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number 11, request to approve fireworks donation to Evansdale Chamber in the amount of 2,500 for the Evansdale Days, sorry, celebration on September 16th. That is an item that we did budget this year. We're working with a couple of different companies to, you know, get the best bang for our buck, no pun intended. But, you know, this all takes money. So the Evansdale Days event, the flyers are out, they're on Facebook, and they'll be put around town. I'll probably do a lot of that this weekend. But it's going to be, "Follow the Yellow Brick Road" is the theme. There's no place like home.
Does the Evansdale Chamber even exist anymore?
It does. We have, I actually talked to Kristi. Donna's not involved anymore, from what I understand. But they have, Kristi obviously is involved. I've, we've worked with Mike over at Diamond's Body Shop.
As far as I know, I never heard of him ever having a meeting yet, so.
Yeah, and I, you know, it was actually kind of when we had RagBri go through.
They're just using it as a tool to...
I did talk to her about that, you know, because it was actually just regenerated back when RagBri went through a couple of years ago. I mean, because it kind of had fallen away. So... You know, I asked them, you know, all, it's...
Most people that originally belonged to it dropped out because of the way it was run, but...
Well, and I don't, you know, have the full scope on that, but I'd be happy to get more information.
That's why I didn't know who was running it. I mean, there's money coming in, yeah.
Yeah, Kristi Tipton, Kristi Tipton is.
And stuff like that.
Yeah.
I don't know how many small businesses are contributing anymore, but...
Yeah. I mean, I could get a list if you would like that.
It's immaterial, but it's...
Yeah, no, but I understand what you're saying, too.
I just wondered who was running it.
Yeah.
And it would be nice to bring it back up, you know, to get it rekindled and more interesting stuff.
It really would. And I know that she, I know that Kristi is working on that as well. So I told her I'd be her first member.
I'll wait and see what happens.
Yep. Sure be nice, wouldn't it?
I'll make that motion to donate the $2,500 to the Chamber for the fireworks.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number 12, request from Public Works Director to purchase a salt-sand mix from City of Waterloo in the amount of $6,266. And there was a memo in there that kind of explained what a great deal this is for us. It's going to save us quite a bit of money.
I need to double-check the decimal points. Not going to lie, like, there's no way.
Yeah, Chris said, is that like almost double or like half as much more as you got last year? Or considerably less? Man, I know you gave the note in our packet. How much, how many tons of salt-sand are we talking?
It's 482.
The 480.
Right.
Like last year, I thought it was 300 tons of salt. Well, then we got next three to one of sand. So then I got to buy all the sand. They're selling it to us for just the cost of the sand.
Okay.
Because they're going to have magnesium.
And then you'll have more than enough for this year, probably even a carryover.
Well, we're open for two years.
Okay.
So it's an outstanding savings.
Okay.
Yeah, upwards of, even just for a one-year purchase, upwards of $25,000 roughly?
I would say we're, well, we're, I would say we're knocking on 60. I would say it'd be...
Really, okay.
Wow, okay.
I can get two years with no salt, no sand. What did we spend last year, 30?
31,000.
31.
30,000 just for salt. And then, you know, three to one ratio for sand at $13 a ton, but...
Yeah, it's...
It's considerable savings, so, I mean, we're already using advantage to even get this offer offered to them, so.
Chris, why are they, why is Waterloo going to the magnesium mix? Is that something we should be looking at?
Well, I don't know. I guess I didn't really ask that specific question, but...
I'm just wondering if there's be a savings to us, you, if we went to that mix versus what we're...
It's more expensive process.
What does it do better? Melt quicker?
Yep. It absorbs it and melts quicker.
And probably destroys the roads faster.
Yeah.
I think, I mean, I think we do, we still use brine every once in a while, but there's just certain applications that we use that on.
Would, would it be fair to kind of echo off of Steve's question? Using salt-sand that we know works, you know, at least is effective for our purposes, at this amount of really savings, obviously go through and do this now for a year, maybe two, but then relook at what it is and how, I'd almost like to see how Waterloo likes it. You know, almost kind of use them as a guinea pig, to be honest. And what do their department like? What do they not like? What did they have to change? And I think we'd be in a good spot with one to two years and massive savings here, in my opinion.
Right.
So they preloaded this for last year, 2023, 2022, 2023 season, and then dabbled with this magnesium chloride and then worked for that. That's why they have so much to offer to us. And now they're going to go fully that way.
Can we look, can we look at, not now, but like in the next year, what maybe would they tell you, the cost of what they're going to versus what they were doing to give us some concept of what it costs? I would, I would really like to see that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'll make a note on that, thank you.
There are a lot of different procedures that I'd like to adapt, but...
They're expensive. Yeah, they're expensive, so...
Even to get us by one year at 6,200 bucks compared to 33.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Once you figure in sand.
Yeah.
Even if we, yeah, figure it out for next year, we still saved a bunch.
I mean, I can predict what it was going to bring, but I'm hoping for two years.
Okay.
Even if it's one, I mean, we know it'll get us by for one. Then right there's our instant savings. We can compare it for a guarantee at one year. We know what our dollars are.
And that can be stored with our sand and salt or however you had it, okay.
They use it the same way we do.
Oh, okay.
We already did that in DOT programs. That probably would have anyway, because I'm still sitting on a pretty good amount of salt and sand, but...
It sounds good.
Yeah, works for me.
I'll make that motion to purchase the salt-sand mix for 6,266.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Excellent. Great job, Chris. Number 13 is request from Public Works to repair John Deere 310 SJ backhoe loader with Murphy tractor in the amount of $5,215.37. This was previously verbally approved because it was something that we needed.
It's been repaired at this time?
Yep.
Second.
Third.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, number 14, ordinance 693 approving electric franchise agreement with Mid-American Energy. This is our third and final reading.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Siebel.
Yes.
Smock, yes. Nichols? Bergman?
Yes.
Number 15 is to adopt ordinance number 693 approving the electric franchise agreement, Mid-American Energy.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Siebel.
Yes.
Smock, yes. Nichols? Bergman?
Yes.
Ordinance 694 approving gas franchise agreement, Mid-American Energy, third reading.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Siebel?
Yes.
Smock, yes. Nichols? Bergman?
Yes.
Okay, number 17 is to adopt ordinance number 694.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Siebel?
Yes.
Smock, yes. Nichols? Bergman?
Yes.
Thank you, guys. Number 18 is ordinance 695, council compensation, in its first reading. I was requested by a counselor to put this on the agenda. Any thoughts or... It's increasing the, the per-meeting pay compensation from $50 to $75.
I think it's well-needed. I mean, I, I'd like to see it higher unless the council agrees to stay at that. But myself, the running, I do for things and stuff, it, you know, I think the council earns the keep, they do, if you're out doing your job the right way.
When was the last time the council was, had a compensation increase?
Just off the top of my head, I think it was probably 2015. Eight years.
I'd put an amendment out there to 100.
I just don't want to get to the Iowa code limit either, though. If we do it at 100, I think we'll surpass the Iowa code limit. What's, what's the Iowa code limit for compensation? I think that was in the packet. It was like 2,500 or something like that?
No, that's not the Iowa code limit. That's, so if we figure...
Oh, that's our code.
That's our code limit. So, and that's always been included in that ordinance.
We'd have to modify that part, too, then.
And that's per person.
Okay.
That's per person.
Okay.
So I figure with extra-budget meetings, I figure probably like 30 meetings a year. And sometimes we have to meet.
Oh, yeah.
To pass certain things.
Easily 30 meetings.
So I actually just, you know, instead of the 24, I rounded it up to 30. And, you know, hopefully that will be enough. Or, you know, every now and again, one of you guys take vacations, so it kind of offsets it or what have you.
I'm impartial. I, I can understand, you know, Steve's point to, you know, spending the time in, you know, your own personal vehicle or gas money stuff around to go check on things or meet with people and whatnot. But, you know, for all of a summary, I, I don't think anybody up here is doing this to get rich. So that's where I come in to, to say that I'm kind of impartial.
I agree with you.
The, the money thing to me is, is not any reason why I'm up here. And that is not accusatory, accusatory of anybody else, just... I've been running on the fire department and couldn't believe we were making $10 at one point, so I almost got to buy myself a Happy Meal.
I still remember it was $2.
See, that's, we're up to 10. I couldn't believe it either. Had to go through a bunch of school to get there, but... So yes, I, I'm impartial here. I don't have an argument really either way.
I would say rev the 175 for me, but...
Whatever the council decides.
Well, we can amend it to put, review it in two years.
I think that's something that needs to be done. And we, we've reviewed every other department in the town for money. When you take the eight years, you take the percentage of it, I think it's pretty low. And we were, tried to be fair with the other areas, but I can live with either or. I don't, it doesn't matter. But I just figured if we're going to do it one time, it's going to be another eight, ten years. Unless we're going to put it in a resolution that we'll look at in two years, that's fine, too. I don't have a problem with that.
And Mayor, just, this specific item obviously isn't budgeted for the increase in compensation, but this would, basically, we would have six months of it if this were to pass as is. This would go into effect January to account for the next elections.
Yes.
And would it just take effect for the elected officers at that point, or would it be all council?
It'd be our council.
It would be all council, okay.
Well, I'll make the motion to, uh, um, increase the compensation to seventy-five dollars per meeting.
And can, and add that?
Yeah, with the caveat that we look at it in two years, I guess.
Yep. I'll add that into the language.
Good.
That'd be good. We can make sure we add that into our budgeting process as well.
I'll second that motion, Jeff.
Roll call, please.
Siebel?
Yes.
Smock? No. Nichols?
Yes.
Bergman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I completely forgot what you wanted me to talk about. Or what?
All right, go ahead. I'll mention it. Go ahead. I'll mention it.
Mayor Council reports. I don't have anything tonight, but, uh...
Other than just an update on actually what Ms. Parker had even brought up.
Yes.
Ms. Parker, even to your point, I would have loved to have a city clerk last two weeks before I, no offense, I'm here, I'm here to help. I love it. But...
Yep.
I'm getting tired of signing checks and all the extras. And so...
Right.
Uh, did you want to give us kind of an update now?
Yes, I do. Yeah.
Since last meeting, we were able to actually advertise and start getting things out here. We just wanted to update the council on where things were at, so.
And we do, um, we do have a, we actually put it on, um, Team Builders. Team Builders goes out to a hundred-plus, um, different organizations to include, um, Indeed. Um, I guess it's even hooked to work, uh, workforce development. Um, I've, we've had applicants from several different uses of that application. Um, we've gotten, uh, seventeen applicants. Um, and we're scheduling interviews at this point. Um, and I also wanted to, if you just give me one moment here.
And I do want to preface, as much as I'd love to say seventeen excellent candidates, just like any job position, sometimes they're just random applicants in a way, just kind of looking for something. So, um, yeah, beggars can't be choosers, but we certainly want to make sure they last and, and are the right fit. I can say, um, I have reviewed all of them. I believe Jeff has been through all of them as just a first phase to kind of update as well, Councilman Siebel and Nichols. Um, my, my thought process behind this from the Personnel Committee is to kind of get a first interview through. Once we've narrowed them down further, once we then kind of vet that first interview, is to then have two council people sit in as in a next interview. So again, to kind of, it won't necessarily be all five, but at least to try to have four different ones during that time, uh, before any offers are made or anything, um, as I stated we would last time. So that's kind of my thought process.
Definitely, definitely keeping the other council, um, in the loop on, on the full thing.
Yeah.
We have had some that have had some accounting backgrounds, uh, some HR backgrounds, a lot of them just in the general customer service side, which is great.
Yep.
And then some that have just kind of been out. Uh, for example, we've kind of seen a trend of a lot of manufacturing backgrounds, which was just unique. You know, I was, it stood out was just a you manufacturing background. So again, want to make sure they find the best fit. Um, we understand we won't necessarily get somebody that's one hundred percent city clerk, you know, certified or stuff right up, uh, right off the bat. But if we can at least get some of the basic backgrounds between some of the, the things that we feel are important, such as the accounting, the HR, financial, city government type of things. So, but, sorry, Mayor, if you've got what you were looking for now?
Yes, I did. So, and just to kind of, um, read it, reiterate a little bit of your code, um, because I have actually been in discussion with our city, you know, attorney, because we're coming up to a lot of reports and stuff like that that need to be signed. Um, it also states, um, except as otherwise provided by state or city law, the council may appoint city officers and employees and prescribe their powers, duties, and compensation in terms. So it also says that in that specific code. Because I, I've just, actually was just talking to our city attorney about that today.
Your point is that the city council shall appoint officers?
Right.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, I was just saying, but they, they also may choose, this, the council may appoint city officers and employees.
In the interim.
In the interim of the city, in absence of a city clerk.
Definitely not a long-term situation.
This is not, and we're looking, honey.
Yeah, it's, we're actively going with this.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a good first swoop, for sure. Hopefully we get a couple in that can get on to the second interviews as well.
Yeah. And we do have, uh, also, just since we're on that subject, an appointment with Iowa Workforce as well next week. So, you know, we're doing, getting into a lot of summer, a lot of vacation. So some of those things were delayed. So, but trust me, we, we need somebody as soon as possible. Anything else?
Yes, I am. Yep.
I just had one question asked. Chris, painting, uh, yellow by the fire hydrants, is that some new code or something we're just doing to flag fire department or... Mandated?
It is.
On the curb?
Yeah.
Yeah, no parking.
Ours had really worn out. And I guess there was a, we, we were, actually, we just weren't certain on what department was responsible for that. And, you know, obviously Waterworks that maintain the fire hydrants, um, Chris did some research into it. It actually is Public Works. So, you know, they've been proactive and getting them done.
I appreciate it. I just wondered why I seen it going on and I hadn't seen it. Good job.
Yeah, there used to be a few, but there wasn't all that had them.
Yep.
It looks good. They've done a great job with the painting this year. Woo-hoo. Anything else, council?
I'll make that motion to adjourn then.
Sounds great.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Have a good night, guys.